We got lots.
I was just chatting.
Yeah, busy.
Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, May 16th, 2023. I'm calling the meeting to order and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republican Party. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you go out and we'll take the whole down?
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
J. David Reed?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Doug Lasbell?
Present.
Ed Ulliberry?
Here.
All city councilors are present.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, Ms. Mayor Pro Tim, are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
Madam Mayor, item number 13, youth city council comments should be taken from the agenda.
Thank you very much. Okay, next on the agenda, I get the privilege of acknowledging our youth city council mayor, Grace Hotsenpillar, so I'll ask Grace to come forward and I get to say some nice words. We're gonna stand front and center, okay? You have your speech ready? Grace Hotsenpillar has served on our youth city council for a number of years. I call four? Three. For three years, and she is the current youth city council mayor. So it's my honor as the mayor of the City of Montrose to give Grace this outstanding leadership award. Grace has some great plans ahead of her, as you know, I was almost late to the meeting because I was visiting with her. She finished her last day of high school today. She graduates on Sunday. She has already obtained her CNA degree through the program with CMU, so she's got a great job lined up this summer, and she will be pursuing her four-year degree in nursing at Fort Lewis College. And this is a young woman who, when we've talked to her as council members and had the opportunity to visit with her, she is full of self-confidence and poise. She has interesting, articulate, well-thought-out comments when she participates in our city council meetings, and I know she's gonna go off and do great things. So on behalf of the City of Montrose, thank you so much for your service. And I think Bree has a little gift for you as well, and then I know you and your mom are gonna go celebrate that you're done with school, so thank you so much for coming. The next thing on our agenda is the time we set aside for public comment for non-agenda items, but I'm not sure we have any people tonight, so I'm gonna ask first if anyone wishes to make a comment before I read all of the language. Is anyone here to make public comment on a non-agenda item tonight? Okay, seeing none, we will skip all the language that would normally be read in that case, and we will move on to item seven, and this is approval of the minutes, and I would entertain a motion.
I move for...
Go ahead. Okay, I still have to boot up my computer to vote, so someone read the whole motion slowly.
I move.
Where's...
Oh, we don't have everyone in the board portal yet. Okay, well, I know you don't have me in the board portal. So I'll remind my fellow councilors that in order to vote in our meetings now, we have this new fancy electronic system, so make sure that you... So you help him?
Am I on?
You're good. I'm glad it's not just me, we're getting used to the new system still. Okay, I think we're, I think we're all good now, right? We got all councilors who are present actually logged in and able to vote electronically, so that'll make it really nice. I think we have yet to have a meeting where it works flawlessly, but I think we're only on our third meeting of electronic voting, so let's give it a few more turns. Okay, with that, we're all ready.
So I think Mr. Reed has an initial...
Did Mr. Reed, did you have a...
Yes, I moved to approve the minutes of the May 2nd, 2023 regular city council meeting.
Okay, and if there's a second...
And I'll second that.
And Mr. Frank seconds that, so you will get a vote pop-up screen, and then you vote, just reminding everyone and myself. And then make sure you hit save after you vote, because that'll send your vote to the main system...
Somewhere.
Which takes about 30 seconds to then display on the screen. Look at that, successfully voted, and the minutes are passed unanimously. Great practice. Okay, next up is item number eight, Ordinance 2625. This is a second reading of an ordinance. It is an ordinance clarifying Article 1, Section 7 of the Charter of the City of Montrose regarding qualifications for candidates to the office of the City of Montrose councillor. And I will turn this over to Assistant City Attorney Matt Magliaro for a brief description.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of city council. I'm here on a second reading of Ordinance 2625. That is intended to clarify a section of the charter, specifically Article 1, Section 7, to add in a usage footnote, specifically a candidate construction, which is the candidate constitutional avoidance, is to add a use footnote to that provision. Proposal appears on pages 11 through 13 of tonight's packet. The language of addition is in bold on page 12.
...in a generational timeframe, not a geological time scale.
Hang on, we gotta, we gotta visit and talk to them.
Our good news is no, so if not, I'm...
Mr. Doll, Mr. Doll, can you please mute your microphone? Thank you. There we go. Okay, back to our Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. This was presented at a work session April 17th and at regular city council session. First reading, May 2nd, were passed unanimously. There have been no changes to this proposal since those meetings, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions about this motion? Okay. It is interesting, our charter review committee was looking over the charter, and it explicitly says in the charter that council is allowed through ordinance to make changes like this that are not substantive in nature. And so I thought, that's good, we're following our charter and making non-substantive changes to our charter.
Anything else from council? Okay, then I would invite any public comment on this item. Seeing none, would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance 2625 on second reading as presented.
We have a first and a second. No further discussion, so please enter your vote. Thank you very much, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Next up, item nine, Ordinance 2626 on second reading. This is council consideration of an ordinance amending the Montrose Municipal Code by repealing provisions related to the Planning Commission and land development, repealing certain chapters of the Montrose Regulations Manual relating to land development, and adopting a new Title 11 Land Development Regulations for the city. And I am, a lot of work has gone into this, so I'll turn it over to Planning Manager Jase Hawkwell to tell us about that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. I'll, I'm not gonna promise any non-technical difficulties tonight, so give me just a second here. There we go. And can we get the consultant came here?
Yeah.
Perfect, okay.
Perfect.
Okay.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay.
Well, three years ago, we were learning how to take all of our meetings onto Zoom as we all sat from home and worked through lots of technical issues and lots of remember to mute yourself. And here we are, three years later, and now we're trying to make hybrid meetings look seamless and flawless, and it's always a challenge, but I think it looks like maybe we've got it going.
I believe we've got it going. I think the one thing, I'm not sure if our consultant can hear us, I hope they can. I'm just kinda waiting for a text from them, but regardless, I can jump into the presentation here. It's gonna be very similar to the presentation that was from two weeks ago, so...
Great.
Actually, I should say no changes, and I'll look to council just as to how much depth I should go in for tonight's meeting. Should I just go in the same depth as last for the public, or would you like expedite?
I think you can go a little quicker than the last time you presented, because all of our council meetings are recorded. Anyone who wants to dig deeper can go and look at all of the information on this item from our previous council meeting. So I think, given that it's a second reading, you can do kind of a shortened version.
Perfect, well, thanks again, council. This has been kind of a long road, started before I started here with the city, actually. And so what we're looking at tonight is the second reading for the land use code consolidation process. Again, this was heard just two weeks ago, it's gone through kind of multiple hearings and multiple communication methods over the last several months, but here we are with kind of the final product. So we're really excited from a staff standpoint, and here's just the project schedule shown on the screen. Project objectives, I won't go too in-depth on this, but really the big project objective here was to come up with a unified code for land use regulations, something that was very user-friendly, something that was consistent and clear for readers. And we wanted to update some pieces, specific to some legal components, and bring some things in line with our comprehensive plan. There's not really a ton of substantive changes that we dove into. We're really looking at that for future phases of this code project. Shown on this slide, you can just see really it's a consolidation of a lot of pieces here. Title 2, which is our Planning Commission title, as well as a good chunk of Title 4, which is, refers to our kind of building land use regulations, generally speaking, as well as some portions of our Montrose Regulations Manual, all consolidated within this Title 11, one just unified area that everybody can find, the, you know, specific locations to what they're looking for. Here's the table of contents for the new Title 11, again, very clear, which will be great for not only staff, but for developers and really, really everybody who dives into this, it'll be easier to navigate for when we get front counter phone calls and all those situations. I went into the charts in-depth last time, so I'll save, I'll save you all from that again, but this is probably the, one of the more exciting things that we're looking at, is just the readability that we have moving forward. So we've got multiple charts, this specific one is the review procedures chart.
It's not that exciting.
Good. And yeah, it just outlines basically what is administrative review and what's a review that just comes directly in front of Planning Commission and City Council for a hearing. It just outlines the process in a really simple way, and this is, I think, we're excited about it because it just, we can relay the information on a lot easier. Again, public notice requirement chart here, nothing different from the last time we presented, and also just worthy of mention in this, we did want to expand our mailed notice a bit further, so we expanded that from 100 to 300 feet. That's pretty much the industry standard, it feels like, these days. So felt like that was fitting with this code update. And then this is the last chart I'll show you tonight, but this is just the land use chart, the basically what's allowed and what isn't allowed in specified zone districts. There's about 10 pages of this within the new code, and it just outlines kind of all the uses in a very simplistic fashion. So it's really, yeah, really readable, really user-friendly. We didn't add any new uses, so I want to make that clear. And we, yeah, didn't eliminate any uses. We just basically put this all into one chart as the code currently reads, and any changes, we'll look at those potentially in the future. And then I'll just conclude with kind of the next steps of the process. So as has been indicated from day one, this has really looked at as a phase one of a multi-phase approach. We felt this was really the best approach. There was a lot of consolidation that needed to occur with that original code, and we didn't want to bog it down with substantive changes for this, for this purpose. So we will look at more substantive changes in the future. We had a housing needs assessment that we're just wrapping up now, and we'll bring that to you all in the near future, just to look to some, for some guidance as to how we want to potentially change some things as it relates to housing and some other components of our code. So future phases will come. I'll be out for a little bit in the coming month, month and a half, but I think after that, we'll hit the ground running pretty hard. And we already have the code consultant who's on the, on the call right now. They've dove into an outline of the project for Phase 2 and moving forward. So all that said, really exciting, it doesn't seem too exciting, but it's, it's a big, it was a big lift by a lot of people, and we're excited to get this one passed. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure our code consultants are happy to answer anything as well.
Any questions from council?
I would just like to reiterate to staff again what a great job you guys did in pulling this all together with the help of our consultants, who also did an outstanding job, so thank you very much.
I have a question, and I think maybe it's for our city clerk, and that is, all of our city code is in, on our website in MuniCode, which is a service we subscribe to, and we give them changes like this, and then they make changes. How quickly will that happen such that the public or developer following along can say, "Oh, I really want to go see those charts"?
So we have been in touch with MuniCode, and we are gonna get them all the documents right away tomorrow morning, and they said they need somewhere between 6 and 12 weeks to make it happen. It's comprehensive, but as soon as it's done, it'll be available in the, on the electronic form on the website, and then we'll get paper versions for our paper copies as well.
Sure, but if someone wanted to see it electronically, they could contact...
We'll have the ordinance itself posted on the website right away.
Perfect.
It's already there, and we'll just have the signed version there.
Okay.
It'll be a little bit cumbersome, but it should be searchable.
Okay.
I'll add to that a little bit as well. So the consultant has a website for this project, and all, the code redlined and fully clean is posted on that, so that's another option in terms of them seeing it, they can see it today, actually, as it will be adopted. So we, a lot of methods, I'm happy to talk with anybody who's really looking at that. I have the full PDF document, but yeah, the MuniCode side, it's also a big lift, so I want to thank our clerk's office for moving that along as well.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, we are holding a formal hearing on this item, which means that we open the hearing and receive any public comment on this item. I do not see any public comment on this item, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing and accept a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance 2626 on second reading as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please.
Why don't yours look different?
Hey Greg, can you come help us out?
Oh, yes.
Okay. We'll see if it pops up for the next one. So with everyone, with four electronic votes and one verbal vote, that ordinance passes unanimously, thank you. Okay, the next item is item 10, the Woods Crossing amended preliminary plat.
Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself from the Woods Crossing consideration.
Then you can excuse yourself while I read this opening. This is council consideration of the Woods Crossing amended preliminary plat, and I will ask City Planner William Reese to tell us about this item.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of city council. Brief presentation to share, and... As soon as I can connect here. It's, it's a planner thing, sorry.
That's okay.
This is why Jason and I don't work for Greg.
Okay, here we go, that looks like the presentation.
Yes, so, sorry about that, but this is an application for an amended preliminary plat in the Woods Crossing subdivision. The original Woods Crossing preliminary plat was presented to and approved by city council in 2021, and the southern portion of the subdivision has been final-platted. The applicant is seeking some amendments to the northern portion, which requires reapproval. There are 108 proposed lots in this portion, and the site is located on either side of Hill Street. The western side of Hill Street is zoned R3A medium-high-density district, and the east side is zoned R2 low-density district. This is an overall reduction in the number of previously approved lots in favor of a larger, little over nine-acre lot, and also restructures the street layout. As mentioned, the Woods Crossing subdivision preliminary plat was approved in 2021, and the first filing of the final plat was approved by city council. With these amendments, we did bring this back to Planning Commission, and they did unanimously vote to recommend approval to city council. For any preliminary plat, whether new or amended, we do turn to our standard subdivision review standards, which are in Section 475 of the code, at least until the previous ordinance is signed and recorded. We look for conformance with the master plan and zoning regulations, the relationship to topography, soils, drainage, et cetera, the availability of water, sewage, drainage, compatibility with the natural environment, adjacent streets and traffic flow, considerations for emergency services protection, and the impacts on areas' schools. According to the Land Use Chapter of our comprehensive plan, the designations are split by Hill Street. The east side is designated as residential mixed-density low, which is currently zoned low-density, and provides for single-family homes, duplexes, or townhomes. The west side is designated as residential mixed-density medium, which suggests a variety of residential types ranging from single-family homes to triplexes or townhomes. This portion is zoned as medium-high-density residential. Ultimately, the zoning designation mandates the building and land use requirements. The R2 district allows for single-family residential development, and the R3A district allows for single-family duplex or multifamily development, as long as the lots meet the applicable dimensional requirements. The area is surrounded by other R2 and R3A zoning districts, as well as R1A, largest state district, R3, medium-density district, and areas outside of city limits. I apologize, the formatting got a bit skewed on this table, but this shows the dimensional requirements for development in both R2 and R3A zoning districts. On the proposed plat, the majority of the lots are sufficient for single-family construction, but are not large enough for multifamily. There are some townhome lots which are treated a little bit differently. They are subdivided into lots each with their own unit, but the sum of the lots across which the townhomes are constructed must meet the dimensional requirements for multifamily. And here is the first page of the plat itself. These are also available in tonight's packet online for any members of the public that are interested, and can be seen a little more easily. This first page primarily consists of the plat notes and the signature lines, which we require for all preliminary plats. The second page consists of more of these plat notes, as well as the line and curve data, and this third page shows the subdivision itself. As mentioned, the major change is the creation of the large lot just on the east of Hill Street. This is located in the R2 portion of the subdivision. As I also mentioned, the street layout is changed. Another access off of Sunnyside is being proposed. One thing to note is that due to this proposed change, Big Pines Loop would no longer comply with the city's street naming conventions, and so with this plat, Big Pines Loop will be changed to Big Pines Drive and Falcon Drive. This is necessary for the benefit of emergencies, emergency services, as their response and routing is dependent on accurate street naming. And while it might not seem like much, this is necessary in order to reduce emergency response times. The final page shows the phasing plan, showing a general indication of the timing for the final plating of these lots. Phase 1 is expected to be presented to council relatively soon. Staff finds that the amended preliminary plat is in compliance with the city's subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan. The proposal meets the intent of the R2 and R3A zoning district. Staff recommends the conditional approval of the Woods Crossing amended preliminary plat with the standard condition that we recommend for all preliminary plats. If there are any questions, I'm happy to take them.
Can you, I do have a question, and it's just about that street naming, just out of curiosity as much as anything else. So it's Big Pines Loop in the, in the southern section that's already been developed, correct?
Correct.
So does that retroactively change because it's no longer a loop as well?
Yes, so assuming this is approved, the existing street name will also be changed administratively by our GIS and E911 departments.
Okay, because it's, I take it, it's because it's no longer a loop, and that's very confusing to emergency response vehicles.
Correct.
Thus the need to rename something that's already in existence.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay, then we will hold public comment. I do not see any public comment, so we could have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Wood Crossing amended preliminary plat expressly conditioned upon the city staff, ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinances, and municipal code provisions are met and that the applicant adequately addressed all of staff's concerns prior to execution of the final plat. The city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat with prior to all conditions being satisfied.
Okay, we have a first...
Second.
And a second, so please vote electronically. And if someone could get Mr. Reed so he can join us again. And that motion passes 4 to 0 with an additional abstention. Next up, thank you, next up on our agenda tonight is item 11, Ordinance 2627 on first reading. This is council consideration... This is council consideration of an ordinance amending the zoning district designation of 0.14 acres located at 2370 Air Parkway from the I-2 General Industrial District to B-3 General Commercial District. And Planning Manager Jase Hawkewell, can you tell us more?
I certainly can. This one, this transition should be a little quicker.
Don't jinx yourself.
Yeah, I jinxed it. All right. There we go. All right. Good evening again, Madam Mayor and members of council. The item I have, this item I have is a fairly straightforward item here, although it's on first reading. So really what we're looking at is we want to avoid split zoning a parcel. So the request is to rezone approximately 0.14 acres from I-2 General Industrial to B-3 General Commercial. The applicant is S&amp;J Development LLC. As shown here, this is the general proximity or general location of the subject sites, situated kind of at the end of the cul-de-sac of Air Parkway. This is a zoomed in photo and this shows the zoning designations. So what just recently happened was a lot line adjustment, boundary line adjustment between two parcels. And as you can see, the zoning designations reflect those current parcel boundaries. That black outlined area is the area that essentially is going to be taken by the B3-zoned parcel. Therefore, what we want to do is, or what the applicant wants to do is rezone it to B3 on the advice of staff, just to avoid any split zoning, to avoid any possible confusion for future development. So again, pretty straightforward, just want to avoid that split zoning scenario. Just kind of some more specifics here. Again, what we're looking at is just a, you know, a portion of a parcel now that that subdivision has gone through that totals 0.14 acres. Again, that's currently zoned I-2 and that would be rezoned to B3. Getting kind of into the more specifics of the rezone criteria, those rezone criteria are shown here on the screen. Pretty, pretty straightforward, you've seen these a number of times, but ultimately the rezone should not adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of the community and the request should be consistent with the comp plan. Staff has found that both of those have been met. Again, this avoids any confusion, it meets, generally meets some of the comp plan objectives as well. Here's that future comp plan map. We just have kind of a, a map glitch, more or less. We have some of these within our future land use map, but what it shows is that future land use designation of employment center and the rezone here really would still kind of qualify it as employment center and that generally kind of reflects your industrial, lighter industrial and, and general commercial type zone districts. So again, staff does find that the request generally meets the comp plan as well as this future land use map. So in conclusion, based on the preceding information as well as the information within the staff report, staff has found that the proposal meets the rezone criteria. It is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. It is compatible with the existing uses in the surrounding area and it eliminates, most importantly, it eliminates that split zoning confusion moving forward for any future development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Okay, then any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve or pass ordinance 2627 on first reading as presented.
Oh, second, Beth.
We have a first and a second. And the motion passes unanimously. Going on to our next agenda item, this is item 12, staff reports. The first staff report we have tonight is the sales, use, and excise tax report from our finance director, Shaney Wittenberg.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Sorry. So this is the sales, use, and excise tax collection report for March of 2023. General fund sales and use taxes collected at 3% on tangible personal property that's sold within the city of Montrose in March compared to March of 2022. Retail sales taxes up 9.4%. Construction use tax down 63.9%. Use and auto use tax down .5%, with total collections up 6.2% and a positive budget variance for March of 15.5%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to the same time period through March of 2022, retail sales taxes up 9.5% or almost $500,000. Construction use tax down 62.2% or $167,000. Use and auto use tax down 6.1% or $22,000, with total collections up 5.2% or $304,000. Positive budget variance here of 14.1% or $756,000 more has been collected than we budgeted through March. Public safety sales and use tax is collected at .58%. March compared to March of 2022, retail sales taxes up 9.1%. Construction use tax up 3.2%. Use and auto use tax down .5% with total collections up 8.3% and a positive budget variance there of 15.5%. Year-to-date sales and use tax compared to 2022, retail sales tax up 9.2% or $93,000. Construction use tax down 46.5% or $26,000. Use and auto use tax down 6.1% or $4,000, with total collections up 5.6% or $63,000. Positive budget variance here as well of 12.6% or approximately $133,000 more has been collected than we budgeted. Montrose Recreation District has collected a .3%. In March 2023, we collected $238,895, which is 8.3% more than we did in March of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $616,545 or 5.5% more than we did through March of 2022, which equates to $32,000. Excise taxes, hotel excise tax adds .9%, restaurant excise tax adds .8% to our total sales tax rate. In March, we collected hotel excise taxes up 9.1%, restaurant excise taxes up 9.3%, all these nines, total collections up 9.2% or a positive budget variance of 42.4%. Since the pandemic, it's been a little bit harder to project the OBT sales and use taxes. Year-to-date, excise tax collections compared to 2022, hotel excise taxes at 5.8% or $1,000. Restaurant excise taxes up 12.8% or $17,000, with total collections up almost 12% or $18,000. Positive budget variance of 48.2% or $57,000 more has been collected than we budgeted. Retail sales enhancement, this is the portion of the vendor's fee that they voted to give back to the city to promote retail sales in the city of Montrose. In March, we collected $57,475 or 9.4% more than we did in March of 2022. Year-to-date, we've collected $148,206, which is 8.1% or $11,000 more than we did through March of 2022. With that, I'll take any question you all may have.
Any questions about the sales, use, and excise tax?
I have one, one question. There may not be an answer to it, but I understand that the construction use tax is a cyclical thing and, and over the course of the year will be up and down. I'm just wondering if you can attribute any particular, one particular thing or two particular things to why we see the construction use taxes down as far as it is this year? Was there a period in last year during this time where there were, there was a lot more construction going on over big projects or?
I'm thinking we can probably attribute it to commercial construction. I can't off the top of my head pinpoint exactly what it was last year. I think it might have had to do with the URA, some of the building that was going on out there. Those permits were probably pulled early and we didn't have that this year. That's what, off the top of my head, I would say.
But I do think it's important for us to realize and for the public to realize that that is a cyclical thing and that it's not anything to be particularly concerned about when we see a number like that.
Correct. Yeah, and I think you could say the same for sales and, not sales and use tax, for auto use tax and use tax itself, because it just depends on when businesses put in improvements and then as far as autos go. I know we had a few years there where people were buying big cars for, I guess before inflation hit, but, and that was causing our auto use tax to be way up. And now compared year after year, when that's not happening, it looks like it's down, but it's really probably just normal.
Thank you.
And both are very small in the overall-
Right.
-collection compared to the retail sales tax, which makes up our primary source of, of tax revenue.
Correct.
Any other questions? Okay, then you can continue on to the next item, which is the first quarter budget review.
And I really don't have a presentation for that. It is in your packet. I do have it up on the screen, but it's basically just a review of some of our major funds to give you all some sort of comfort as to where we are with collecting revenues and spending money. So everything looks to be in order for the first three months. It's a little bit slow going sometimes with the capital projects. I must say, year after year, those pick up rather quickly early, early on, but for the most part, I didn't see anything that was of great concern. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Doesn't look like there are any questions on that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We, as Mayor Pro-Tim Reed noted, we don't have youth city council comments because they are adjourned for the summer. So that takes us to item 14, city council comments. Any counselors have something for, to comment tonight?
I'd just like to say, I think the article in the paper talking about street repairs was very well done and I think that was very timely.
That was my comment as well, so.
Great. Okay, then no other comments?
I would entertain a-
I'll make a motion to quit for today.
Use the fancy word.
We may adjourn. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. Oh, make sure you, yeah, make sure you leave the meeting.
Oh, jeez.
If you go back to your-
I have to go back and leave it.
Go back to agendas and leave meeting right there.
Perfect, thanks. That's easier than this one.
And then the rest of leaving the meeting would require pushing the chair back, standing up, and walking.